All right, well then, it's 5:30. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting, which has been duly posted of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And at this time, I'll ask Commissioner Frank Quintet to lead us in an invocation.
Amen. The Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We praise your presence in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of the people that need you. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worth of the human person. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to those who are joining us tonight, virtually or observing online. We appreciate the participation that we get from the public, even though it's under these circumstances. But as the City Commission, it's important for us to set an example for the rest of the community. And by having these physically distanced Zoom meetings, I think we do that and help keep each other safe during this time. So with that, I will call on Amanda to let us know whether we have any citizen communication.
Okay, we only have one from Ms. Dina Murphy, and this is in support of a special use permit to allow a group home and hunter number subdivision. And if you would like me or I can read her comment.
Why don't we read it when we get to that item, item five? Other than that, no one else has signed up or submitted anything?
No one has.
Very good. Then we'll go to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Sum of second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
They're already.
The motion carries.
Right when he said, are we live?
Ted, you're going to mute your lines, Ted.
Yeah, he started, we put it in.
And item two is the consideration possible action to award the employer employee health and group insurance for fiscal year 2020, '21, naming the insurance agents and authorize the city manager to sign the contract as recommended by Scott Gibbs, the city's insurance consultant.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We have Scott Gibbs, our consultant, on video, on Zoom, and I'm going to turn it over to him. He'll make the presentation.
All right, Mayor, Commissioners, Dan, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, perfect. All right. So I'm going to share my screen and we'll go through the presentation for the renewals. So the agenda, I'm going to just talk a little bit and give you a little bit of health plan history. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Perfect. And then we'll talk about the health plan marketing analysis. You know, we put it out to bid and we'll go through that. Then we'll talk a little bit about the dental plan renewal, the vision plan renewal, the life, accidental death and dismemberment and disability renewal, and then the recommendations. So just a little bit on the health plan history. Obviously, our current carrier is Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Our loss ratio for 2000, for October 1 of 2019 through May 31st of 2020. And what a loss ratio is, is it is the amount of premiums you pay divided by the claims. So we were at about a 76% loss ratio. So definitely running pretty well. Now, I will say, you know, our claims in April and May were typically lower, obviously because of COVID-19 and the lack of elective, you know, procedures that were there. So maybe a little bit artificially low, but still, you know, running well. So our total paid claims, about 3.3 million. The total paid premium to Blue Cross was about 4.3 million. If you go back and you look at where we finished, the plan year 18, 19, our loss ratio was about 89.28%. Total paid claims, about 5.6 million. Total paid premium, about 6.3 million. And just remember that the carrier's desired loss ratio is about 85%. The last year we were running not as well as they probably liked. This year, we're running a little bit better. And just, and I did look at, when we put this out, you know, I did look at the self-funded projections as well, but it still does not make sense. There's, you know, we're still running on pretty much the same number from partially self-funded to fully insured. So I continue to honor that and to see when we can do it. The original renewal actually came in verbally kind of at 13. We got them down to 9.4. And then we did do a best and final, and that will be the number that will be reflected. So looking at the health plan marketing analysis with our best and final offers, so we did receive some competitive quotes. We received Aetna and we received Aetna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, United Healthcare. All three very, very competitive. The broker John Ender Shepherd Walton and Texas Insurance Service. So you can see, you know, Aetna during the negotiations, they gave us a transition allowance of $30,000. They grandfathered the pharmacy for 90 days with one refill. They gave us a three-month deductible carryover, and they also provided us a premium holiday of $463,000. So that $463,000 would, you know, we would utilize that first as a premium deferment, and then we would start paying premium. Blue Cross came in, we got their renewal down from the original 9.8 to 5.4. And then they gave us alternate plans. I'm not recommending the alternate plans at all. They get us down to 1%, but it really, it kind of decimates the benefits a little bit, and I'll show you here in a minute. And then UHC came in, and United Healthcare traditionally has not been competitive. They were very competitive and did put in a, you know, a good bid. They gave us a premium holiday of $200,000. They also offered a premium deferral program also, and I haven't even had a chance to communicate with the city manager and Efren, but today I received an email from Blue Cross and they are doing a premium deferral for all of their fully insured business. So I'll get more information for that and make sure that city staff knows about that. But UHC gave a premium deferral, basically 24 months. They, and they would do a rate cap in the second year of 9.9%. That's a rate cap. So if we ran better, we could do better. And then the payments, so we would pay, we could pay the, you know, first four months a 50% of premium, and then the remainder would be at 110% of premium. So they did provide a good quote. We did get a quote just for stop loss, but since we're not looking, you know, at moving to self-funded, we did not, you know, put that on the spreadsheet. So looking kind of at this, and I'll make this a little bit larger so that we can see it. So this was kind of where Blue Cross came in. So you can see here on the left side, these are same benefits. So we've got our current rates, our best and final rates. So overall, you can see about a 5.8% increase with Blue Cross keeping the plans the same. They did offer plan, you know, some plan differences. They only gave about 4% credit for that, but these benefits really are stripped down. I would have, I would have, from an underwriting standpoint, I don't think we got full credit for that. So I would not recommend, you know, looking at that. So I think from the best, best and final would really need to keep the benefits the same with Blue Cross at 5.8%. So Aetna came in competitively. Aetna's in the process of finalizing an ACO with Valley Baptist. They don't have it done right now. It's not signed, but they anticipate when it does get signed, potentially it could be up to 15%. They came in at about a 13.6 increase, but with the 420,000 a premium holiday, it put them at about 6.5%. Obviously, with them being above Blue Cross, when we talked to staff, this is just not something we would, we would want to do if we were going to, you know, recommend, you know, if we're going to recommend moving and, you know, going through the implementation, disrupting the employees, we'd absolutely, you know, we would want to see a certain amount of savings there. So then we, we had a quote, as I said, from United Healthcare. In my slide here, green, it means that the benefits is a little bit better than where we are. They have their Navigate product, which would replace our HMO product, but it's a gatekeeper product, so the member would have to choose a primary care physician. And then, you know, some of the things they do, their co-pay, if it's a designated or preferred primary care physician, it would be 25 versus 35. The pharmacy benefit was a little bit better. They came in overall at about 5.4%. You can see the rate cap, you know, methodology, and then also they do have $0 co-pay for children up to age 19. Again, right on top of the Blue Cross number, so not a lot of cost savings to potentially move. They did provide a couple of different options as well. So one option would be if we did away with, currently we have out-of-network benefits on Plan Two and Plan Three. With UHC, if we eliminated the out-of-network benefit on Plan Two or Plan Three, we would see pretty much a flat renewal, a little bit of savings. So, you know, so at the end of the day, but we would be, you know, losing, you know, the out-of-network benefit. So they also, we also looked at an option of if we, we took away the out-of-network benefit on Plan Two but kept it on Plan Three, you know, that would put us at about 1.3%. So about, you know, 84, you know, $84,000 kind of above current. So about 280 or so thousand between the two. So, you know, we looked at this, we talked about it, and I think, you know, the discussion with staff is, you know, we, I think we've come in under, under the budget, the original budget that we projected, and the members are happy with Blue Cross. We haven't had a lot of issues. And, you know, if we were to move, there's always, there's a cost of moving from staff time, and then there's also disruption. You're never going to match the formulary on the drug plan exactly, so you are going to have some disruption. Also, with it being the year that we're having with COVID, there are challenges surrounding enrollment meetings, how to conduct enrollment meetings safely from a virtual standpoint. So kind of looking at all that and looking at the potential savings, you know, my recommendation along with staff is to, is to remain with Blue Cross. Just, you know, just feel like there's, there's not enough savings, you know, there's just not enough savings there to disrupt the employees. And then with the challenges of this year and enrollment, I think that's, that was our, you know, that, that's our recommendation, and I'll have it on the recommendation slide. So on the medical, I'm glad to take any questions. You know, Dan, I don't know if you, if you want to add any comments or Efren, but that's, that's kind of where we landed, but I'm glad to take any questions from, from the Commissioners.
How long, how long is this good for, this bit? We'll look at this.
It'll be just. It's just for one year. You know, and, you know, we tend to, depending on where the renewal comes in, you know, dictates whether we, whether we look at it or not. If the renewal comes in where we don't like it, then we, we could potentially look at it again next year. So it's a 12-month contract, and if for some reason the renewal next year came in from Blue Cross, we didn't like it, or if there were certain circumstances in the marketplace that changed, i.e. Aetna comes out with their ACO and we want to take a look at that, we can certainly take a look at it again next year. Yes, sir.
But, but would it, would it not be more advantageous to add another year, to have some kind of stability because of all the unknown factors that you just spoke to?
Yeah, and unfortunately, Blue Cross did not offer us a second year rate option or rate cap. So it, you know, that was just.
So they're just not offering it?
They're not, they're not offering it. And so that was something, I will be honest with you, when UHC put that out there, that's something that I have not seen in the recent past. But yeah, so Blue Cross did, you know, they did not offer it. They're, they're firm at a 5.8 for this year. We've had pretty good luck historically over the past few years. We've had a rate pass at one point, and then we've, we've always been able to negotiate somewhere probably between 3 and 7%. And so it also dictates on how the claims run as well.
Right. No, I'm very happy that, that you're suggesting that we stay with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, because I really feel down here in the valley that they're the most dominant with the in-network options. So I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, any other questions for Scott?
And we've, and we've got, so, so the next slide, we just did a little bit of a disruption analysis. So you can see everybody, you know, again, with Blue Cross, you know, we're in the 97% range. You know, UHC's at 99. That probably is potentially because of some basically in-hospital contracts that maybe they had. So really, both of them are, you know, strong. You can see the Blue Cross HMO, not quite as, as strong as UHC, but our members are on the HMO plan, so they already understand it. And then, you know, Aetna. So all three plans were very, I think, good options. Again, I just, I think, I think Blue Cross has been a good partner. I think our members are used to their network and like their network. So we did, so a couple of things, let me shrink this back a little bit again. So a couple of things. So our dental planner Noel came in initially, and our, our members tend to be, they tend to be pretty happy with Aetna right now on the dental. The initial renewal came out at 9.5%. We were able to negotiate that down to about a 4.5% increase. And not only that, they gave us a second year rate cap of 5%. So our recommendation would be to renew with Aetna on the dental. As well, the vision, and here's the dental plan renewal analysis, and really you can just see that this has got the original at 9.5 and 4.9, and this has the benefits that we have in place. So it's a, you know, we have a high-low plan offering, and you can see it's pretty split. We've got at 184 employees in the low plan, 229, you know, in the high plan. So again, they, you know, our, our members tend to be pretty happy with Aetna, so we're recommending that we renew with Aetna. The vision plan, our current carrier is Davis Vision. When they came in three, four years ago, they gave us a really, really good, good rate. They did, they're asking for 18.58% increase. They are giving us a four-year rate guarantee. I know that looks large, but it actually is lower than our rates were in 2016, four years ago. So we've still done well. And remember too, the dental plan and the vision plan are, are voluntary plans just paid for by, by the employees. The employees like decision, you know, our recommendation would be to accept it, you know, we, we still are cheaper than where we were in 2016. And so the plan designs, this is kind of how they look. We've got a high option again and a low, low option. So going up, you know, just on the, for the employee, you know, it's going up on the high option about, you know, a dollar and, you know, 40 cents and change to the, to the family rate, where it's, you know, about $3.60 on a, on a monthly basis. So the life and AD&amp;D, accidental death and dismemberment and disability renewal, our current carrier is Unum. We got a 0% increase. What we pay for the life is about 11.5 cents per 1,000 of coverage. The voluntary life is employer-paid. They have given us a rate guarantee of two years until 10/1/2020. Again, so our recommendation is to accept the Unum renewal. So with that, our recommendation again is to, again, and kudos to UHC. I think they, I think they gave us a good quote. You know, ultimately, I think the members are happy with Blue Cross, and I think especially this year, less disruption is probably a good thing. The, you know, renew the dental with Aetna, the vision with Davis Vision, and then the life, AD&amp;D, and LTD plans with Unum. So with that, I'll take any more questions. I'm glad to take any more questions. If you have any follow-up items or you want to see anything differently in the future, I'm glad to go get it for you.
Mayor Commissioners, that's the presentation from Scott. And another separate items on the agenda is two, three, and four. And staff, unless there's any other questions, staff is ready to make a recommendation.
Okay. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions for Scott on his presentation?
Mayor, do we have to motion for each individual item, or can we take them as two, three, and four?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Do we have to motion for each individual item, two, three, and four, or can we take them on as one motion?
They're individual items, so they, the attorney's not even prepared. Yes, you do.
Allison could, Allison could answer that question, but I think probably want to take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to motion for, for motion two.
Okay. So, so item, we'll go to item, on item two then, this motion would be to, actually, item three, we go to item three. No, item two is to award employee health and group insurance plan for fiscal year 2021. And that would be for, the recommendation is to renew the current health plan with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and appoint Shepherd Walton and Texas Insurance as the agents. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second by me.
Okay, we have motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. Item three is consideration possible action to renew the voluntary life, accident, death, and dismemberment insurance voluntary, vision insurance, and voluntary dental insurance plans for the city of Harlingen fiscal year 2021, authorize city manager to sign the contract. And the recommendation on that is to renew the current dental plan with Aetna, renew the current vision plan with Davis Vision, and renew the current life, AD&amp;D, and LTD plans with Unum. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion for Commissioner Calarosa?
Second.
And second by Commissioner Arive. Anyone, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consideration possible action to award voluntary whole life insurance for fiscal year 2021, naming insurance agents and authorize the city manager as recommended by Scott Gibbs.
Mayor, I think we're going to table this item until the next meeting.
All right, well then we'll, we'll just pass it. Pass item four. All right, well, thank you all for, that's, that's good to be able to hold the cost down to just under 6% on the, on the renewal, good negotiation. Thank you, Scott, for a good review of what is a complicated subject matter. So thank you. And thanks to the staff, Efren and Dan, and the team that worked on this. Thanks very much.
Well, thank you, guys. Hopefully, hopefully next time I'll be able to see you guys in person. So stay safe, and if you guys need anything at all, please just don't hesitate that, to give me, give me a shout.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Item five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a group home in a residential single-family R1 district located at 221 McGregor Street, bearing a legal description of north part of Lot 1, south 66.4 feet of Lot 9, Block D, 100, Number 1 and Number 2 subdivision.
Mayor, may I interrupt? I signed a conflict of interest form. It's on file with the city secretary, so I'm going to just stop my video so that nobody can see my face.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Law is not participating and has filed his affidavit.
Mayor, City Commissioner, good afternoon. We have an application for a special use permit for a group home. This group home is for teenage moms. It's an organization that helps teenage moms become independent single mothers. This group home is proposed at the corner of Third Street and McGregor Street, across the street from Hunter Park. There's only a single-family residential on all sides, but you do have a Hunter Park along the east side of the property across the street. And that's the organization that is interested in purchasing this duplex. They really like it because of the park that is across the street, and the neighborhood is very nice and peaceful. This is the, is like I mentioned, it's a duplex in the property, and so they're planning, if the SUP is approved, they're going to purchase the property, they're going to remodel it, and then turn the duplex into one big house that will have five bedrooms, one for a mother that is there at the, at the home 24 hours, taking care of the, of the teenagers' mothers, and then four bedrooms or for a potential of four teenage moms that will be housed there. This is the site plan of the duplex. As you can see, it's two separate houses, but if the SUP is approved and the company purchases the property, they're going to combine the two houses into one big house. This is the aerial photo. It shows the Hunter Park across the street, and so that's, they really like the area for this group home. That's a picture of the, of the two houses at the corner there on Third and McGregor. Staff recommends approval of the request. No, no city department reported any objections. Staff recommends approval, subject to certain conditions, required to maintain the parking, to maintain the existing landscaping, to maintain the proper city permits and state permits. For the property to remain as a single-family dwelling with an occupancy of no more than 16 people at any time, must comply with all city ordinances, get a certificate of occupancy, must comply with all the city requirements from the different department. We had the meeting last week with the Planning and Sonning Commission, and no one spoke in opposition to the request. We did get a phone call after the Planning and Sonning Commission with some concerns from, from one of the neighbors, but I think those concerns have been addressed by the applicants. The Planning and Sonning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval with a 4 to 0 vote.
So I'd like to motion for an approval.
Hey, we need to, we need to go to a public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, item A is a public hearing, and it, since we don't have anyone in the meeting room, but we do have Ms. Murphy's written submitted statement, so I'll ask Amanda to read that at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It reads like this. I have volunteered with an organization called Young Lives for 10 years here in the Harlingen community. Our leaders have been allowed to volunteer in the Harlingen Consolidated School District Team Parenting Class. We bring in speakers and programs that address the special needs and circumstances of our teen moms. We also invite the girls to participate in off-campus activities that we hold regularly. What we have learned in our 10 years of experience is that we need a residential program for our teen moms that do not have safer structural home lives. Our group home, Hope House Harlingen, will offer this option for our girls in need. It will be built to house 14 moms and babies and one whole-time house mother at a time. We believe still, hope. We believe still home won't change many lives.
All right, thank you. So there being, there being no other public comment, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is a consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a group home in a residential, single family R one district at the described property. And I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Lolly Burns to allow a group home facility in a residential, single family R one district located at two twenty one McGregor Street, bearing a legal description of the north part of lot nine and the south sixty six point four of lot nine, block D, Hunter number two subdivision, subject to maintain the required parking in accordance with city regulations, maintain the existing landscaping in accordance with city regulations, obtaining and maintaining the proper city permits, obtaining and maintaining any applicable state permits. To remain as a single family dwelling status occupant load shall not exceed sixteen, must comply with all city ordinances, codes and standards by means of field inspections before a final certificate of occupancy is issued in compliance with the requirements administered by the Planning and Development Department, Building Inspections Department, Fire Prevention Department and Environmental Health Department.
Okay, now Commissioner Arive, would you like to make your motion to adopt the ordinance?
Yes, sir, so move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arive, is there another?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And the motion carries. I want, I want to thank the staff for working with this organization. This is a nonprofit organization that kind of came to us with, and didn't know what to do and needed some, some help and some guidance to get to this point. And, and I think our, I think the staff did a great job in, in assisting this organization with this very beneficial project for the community. So thank, thank you all.
You're welcome.
All right, item seven is, or item six is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a school in a single family residential R one district located at four oh one North Twenty First Street, bearing a legal description of one point five four acres, part of block sixty four, Hodge Land and Water Company subdivision. Captain is Daniel Ibarra.
Yes, Mayor, this is a property that had a church at the side. I don't know the name of the church. It's, it's been vacant and it's for sale. Mr. Ibarra would like to purchase the property and open, set up a school for at risk kids. And this will be kids from elementary to high school. And this will be for evenings, so for after school, they will come to the school for additional classes to remove them from being at risk kids. This is at the, at the corner of Jefferson and Twenty First Street. So it is a single family residential on all sides, a planned development district to the north. This is the site plan, what they're proposing for the church building, the classrooms. There's an existing parking lot that was recently repaid. So the applicant thinks that this property will work well for him for this proposed school for at risk kids. This is the picture of the building. It's a, it's a building in very nice condition, very nice parking lot, a nice peaceful neighborhood. You have a Bonham Park and Bonham Elementary coming quarter from this property. And then you have a high come bike trail and the railroad tracks and also Stems Academy to the, to the other side. We received, we did receive one phone call in opposition before the Planning and Sonny Commission meeting, but they did not show up to the meeting to, to address any concerns. So we, we think the phone call, they were okay with it after all. The departments have reported no objections. So the, the staff recommends approval, subject to compliance with all city ordinances and codes. Subtle of a building permit application and construction documents prepared by a licensed architect for the, the change from a church to a school. Maintain the parking spaces and the landscaping. Have documentation for the railroad, granting permission to encroach into the right of way of the railroad and compliance with the requirements from the different departments. Like I mentioned before, no, no one spoke in opposition during the Planning and Sonny Commission meeting last week. And the commission recommended approval unanimously.
All right, so we'll go, we'll go to item A, which is a public hearing, but Amanda, nobody signed up for this item?
No, ma'am.
So we'll, we'll close the, we'll open and close the public hearing. And then go to item B, which is a consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a school in a single family residence R one district if you've described property. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Daniel Ibarra to allow a school in a single family R one district located at four oh one North Twenty First Street, subject to, one, compliance with all city ordinances, codes and standards, and two, submittal of a building permit application and construction documents prepared by a Texas licensed architect for an official plan review, and three, provided maintain the required parking spaces and existing landscape according, in accordance with city regulations or provide documentation of the railroad granting permission to approach into the right of way. And five, compliance requirements administered by the Building Inspections Department, Engineering Department, Fire Prevention Department, Health Department and Planning and Development.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Item seven is consideration possible action to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city of Harlingen Police Department to submit a grant application in reference to the Southwest Border Rural Law Enforcement Assistance Program from the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is a, a grant specifically for agencies along the southwest border and in proximity closer to the border. So what we're looking at applying for in this grant is some additional canines, which are not getting to be more and more expensive, plus the training for the handler of the goat. And then some license plate readers, which will be attached to some marked police units, as well as a little bit of surveillance equipment.
All right, very good. Is there a motion approved?
Some move.
That you know that Commissioner Arive stepped out to for a little while there, we'll be back.
Okay, I think, I think Commissioner Mesmar made the motion and Commissioner Calarosa seconded. Is there any discussion?
Or vice versa.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Item eight, consideration possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen sign the interlocal agreement between the Harlingen Consolidated and the School District and the Harlingen Police Department, staff, police officers and school resource officers, chief.
Let's see, let me get this going. All right. Again, Mayor Commissioners, we have the interlocal agreement for this year coming up with the school district. And there are some changes from last year's agreement, so I'm going to cover those real quickly. Last year, the staffing of the school was one sergeant, six assigned SROs, which were just for the school year, the actual school days. And then we had two part time SROs, which they would include on an overtime basis. So nine officers this year. Because of the, the COVID issues and the fact, you know, the school was actually shut down for many months and then projecting ahead, not knowing exactly where, how school's going to be in session coming up. Hey, Chief, really quick, could you advance your slide? On the PowerPoint? That way they can see what you're. Are you seeing me advance it? It's, we see the first slide. Okay, that must be on, let me try to figure that one out then. There, you advanced it there. Just click it to, click on the second slide. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Sorry about that. My first time sharing the screen, so I'm learning. Anyways, and then this year, we got the sergeant there. They're going to have three assigned SROs, which is down from six last year. But now those three assigned SROs will be for a full fiscal year. So starting with the school district's fiscal year, which began actually July first. And then we're going to do five part time SROs. And that'll be subject to however many they need, you know, depending on the number of kids that are in school and how many schools they actually have operating. And that gives them a little bit of flexibility and both part time SROs will be on an overtime basis. So for compensation, and that's what I was basically hitting on, is that for this year, the sergeant and the three regular SRO, SROs will be paid year round. The five part time SROs will only be for the actual school days and they're paid at an overtime basis of forty five dollars an hour. Now with that also comes the vehicles that go with them for the regular SROs and the sergeant. They're paying seven thousand dollars a, a year for the upkeep maintenance on the fleet. And then on the part time SROs, when they're there, they're actually reimbursed at ten dollars an hour. So if you calculate that out, just one vehicle for a full school year ends up actually being fourteen thousand dollars and a little more. Now it's got to the end. If you have any questions?
Yeah, Chief, my question was going to be the COVID. So on the COVID, your, your one sergeant, your three SROs, they're, they're going to be employed no matter what's going on at the school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only real concern is what was going to happen if there was nothing going on in class and you cleared that. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Is there, is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration possible action to accept or reject proposals and award the contract for the Hunter Park Improvement Project under proposal number twenty twenty dash eleven to the most responsible respondent submitting the most advantageous design product and to waive any formalities. Javier?
It's here, Mayor, City Commission. So we received five proposals for, for the RFP that we had solicited back the first week of June. So we received them, we opened them and then we, we had a committee set up, consisted of CDBG employee, my assistant, myself, and then one of the park board members. And so we evaluated each proposal, they scored them, they submitted the scores back to us, so we tabulated them. And so the, the option two from Park Place Design received the highest score. But if you don't mind, I would like to kind of go through the top four and kind of give you my opinion as far as the pros and cons. And then you can select whether you want to continue with the committee's recommendation or select another one. So I'm going to kind of share my screen real quick. So. Let's see. See how I'm going to do this. Okay, can y'all see that by screen?
No.
Well, y'all, y'all have the, the picture of the, of option one and option two, correct? Yes.
Is that the one that was uploaded to iPads later?
Yeah, I wish I could show you this because I want to, I want to kind of go through it.
Okay, I found option one on my iPad.
There it is.
Okay, well, see this one, I, I'm going to kind of maybe skip around. Okay, so this one was, was fixture play. And you can see what, what, what we liked about it was it has a ramp near to the other parts. It comes around, but we kind of created a, a template for, right? And so we want to kind of select playgrounds that are somewhat all inclusive. And so this one here has a, a ramp that goes all the way up to the top level. The problem with this one is that it has the engineered wood fiber. Okay, and so, so if you try to get around and maneuver throughout the wood fiber, it's very difficult. And so the other thing, it doesn't have a sidewalk all the way around like we had asked for. And so this one here scored ninety two point thirty three. Okay, so see if I can get the next one. Okay, so this one here is from fun, fun of bounds. And so the same thing, the, the playground structure has a lot of play activity introduced in it. So what I liked about it, or what we liked is that it had a, again, the ramp went throughout the most of the playground and got up to this section here where there's a, there's a deck, it's a hexagon. And then the rest, of course, is, is play activity on the outside. But again, this one is engineered wood fiber. And so this one did have a sidewalk all the way around it. And so let's see if. I stopped that one and.
I'm sorry, Javier, which is the one that you, that staff is recommending or the committee recommended?
Let me see if I can go to, to that one. Okay, option two. Okay, can y'all see that one?
Not yet, you need to open it.
Click on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they give you the double click on it.
Okay, let me try it again.
You, you want me to try?
Can you get it?
There it goes.
Now, close your eyes, let me, let me try and see if I can open it. Just make sure that I have the right one open. Is that it?
Okay, so that's, that's, that's option one. That's the one that, in my opinion, I, I recommend because this one, you can see where you get up on the sidewalk, off the sidewalk, get onto the ramp. You can, you can use the glider, the ultra grad, you can continue on the ramp. There's a deck underneath this tower. And then you can continue all the way to the, to the third deck. And then you can get off if you want or you can continue. But there's a lot of play activity on the, on the playground and on the outside. And so what we did here. Proposed half artificial turf and half engineered wood fiber, just so that we can get more play activity. And so we like this, or at least I, my opinion, we, I like this, this design. And so uh we like this, or at least I, in my opinion, we we I like this uh this uh design. Because of that, there's there's a lot of play activity, uh it's pretty much all-inclusive, you got children that are that are wheelchairs or able kids that can that can get up to the top level of that mega tower.
And so Javier, so what what's the difference between this one and the one what the committee is recommending?
Okay, uh can you go to the one, Dan?
Y- yes, sir. Let me uh let me find it.
While Dan's doing that, you keep talking about the wood fiber, and on that option one, it's half turf and half fiber. And I noticed there was an all-inclusive glider, but that glider's located in the middle of the fiber.
Right, so you would access that ultra glider from the ramp. So you wouldn't access necessarily that glider from the outside of it, and so that was the reason that the manufacturer designed it that way. So that's where the dividing line is, where you have turp- artificial turf and the and the wood fiber. And I'll tell you, we've done two other projects like this, we did the playground at the Vestal, and we did the playground at Bonham uh like this, just to save money and and get more play activity.
Now, what I was talking about is on option one, you have a swing set, and it says inclusive swing set, but it's located in the mid- middle of that fiber.
Correct, so the playground itself is is inclusive, right, so you could, by by uh regulation, you could, the the wood fiber is considered um um ADA accessible. And so is sand, and so is um um what do you call it, the pebbles, right, the uh rock, so, but, you know, it's it's easier said than done i- to say it's it's ADA accessible, but to actually maneuver through it is difficult uh in a wheelchair.
Okay, so so I'm sorry, but but if you can please explain to me why the committee is recommending this this particular design versus what you're recommending? Is it is it just the flooring that 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 concerns you?
Yes, yes, so here, this one here, I mean, I like it, it's it's nice, it has a shade over it, it has a sidewalk all the way around it, it has artificial turf throughout the entire thing. But if you see here, you get up on the ramp, uh you go to that first deck, and then that's it. Uh you get an ultra glide, and then that's it, so the person in a wheelchair, we have to come back out and then um.
I see, I see, can you go back to the slide um the of the one that you're proposing?
And it looks like option one has more towers to it, because again, I'm looking at it on my.
Right, right, I I think that's what I caught. Let me uh let me get it back.
Instead of a real large shade structure, it's got the, just the the covers over the towers.
And Javier, while you're doing that, uh what's the timeline, are you all ready to 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 uh to start on this?
Yes.
The fundings come in place and.
Yeah, so um CDPG would like to like to fund this and get it get it uh finished uh before the end of the fiscal year. So the only thing that we we have um we may have an issue with is just as far as the manufacturer getting the equipment out in time, so um but.
Okay, uh Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to motion for an approval uh on on Javier's recommendation of and and um not going with them with the committee's recommendation, but going with Javier's uh recommendation.
O- option one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Morris, a question, what's engineered wood uh fiber? And what's the lifespan in uh direct heat and sun here?
So so the engineered wood fiber, um it's uh, of course, it's wood chips that are uh that have gone through the mill, and so they remove all the sharp edges out of it, but the lifespan of the wood fiber is, we're having to replace the wood fiber uh maybe every year, year and a half, depending on on the use. So it decomposes, uh and then we replace it, you know, we we add more wood fiber to it um to the playgrounds.
Okay, so so similar to mulch, I might put in my uh garden or around my trees.
You you get a good.
So there's no glue involved, this isn't strand board or anything like that.
That, no.
And you you get you get a good rain event, some of this is gonna float away.
That was the next question, so this this is uh real wood, so if we get a major rain event, we're gonna lose some of it just through floating.
I I think eventually we probably would wanna do all of it in artificial, somewhere down the road, just like we have all the other playgrounds. I think what Javier likes about this particular place that, as you can see from the my cursor, someone in a wheelchair can gain access to all the components of the playground.
Yeah, that's what I was noticing, the other one looks nicer because it's got a big shade structure. But I I think this one gives more uh interaction, for lack of better words, that the person can go through the different places and and enjoy their their time there. So did we did we get a second on uh Mr. Odiva?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we did. So anybody else, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, with that, we have a motion, a second on uh to uh to go with Javier's recommendation and and approve the playground. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries, this is definitely the the most fun thing that we get to do, is the city commission, I think, and that's uh to authorize construction of playground equipment, and I really makes me happy to do this. And that Hunter Park, you know, that's kind of a sweet little park, and really needs some attention. Uh I think it would be a great, great location for this playground equipment, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Staff and to the commission. All right, item ten is the consideration of possible action to permit the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District to install a temporary crosswalk across Hayne Drive adjacent to Treasure Hills Elementary School.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, um this project is part of Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District's improvements to the Treasure Hills School. Uh they're doing a lot of demo work there right now, they've 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 built a second wing. And uh due to the demolition, uh part of that is is gonna be impacting their parking lot. So what they're proposing and 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 the parking lot is not part of what we're talking about tonight. Specifically, they're gonna put a a park, a temporary parking lot uh across at the UTRGB uh site, and uh they are requesting that uh they can install a a temporary crosswalk uh that that would be used to access this parking lot to the school. Um so that that's really the gist of what we're talking about uh tonight.
And Andy, is it just painting the the painted on the road, or are we gonna put some uh light light uh post, like, you know, the the flashing signals?
It it will be uh the painting on the road, and then we're gonna put uh uh some signage. Uh it won't be flashing, but it'll be the uh the.
Cause that's that's a very, very busy um very busy uh roadway, and and uh again, I always mention that the fact that people are so used to a certain uh thing not being there, and even if they see it, they're just gonna go right through it, you know?
Sure. I uh.
And not to add, the fact it's in the middle of a of a block rather than on a corner.
Correct.
Correct. Um so um the funding for the signs was coming from um from the school district, I can I can go back and ask them if they would be willing to install a flashing beacon.
Well, I mean, yeah, even if it's like the those, so I I really like the one that that's in in Victor's district on Dixieland, uh Dixon Lane, and I think Garrett. Cause that's also a blind corner, but but just the fact that it's flashing, um I I you know, it's just a, it just adds to a layer of safety.
Sure.
Right now, Hayne, uh you can only go five to ten miles an hour, the street's all ripped up, putting in brand-new water pipe, larger pipe. Uh will this be done temporarily while the street's torn up, or will we wait till the street is fully repaired and repaid? Or both?
This will be for the school year coming up, um so it it will be in conjunction with all the 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 current work that's that's being done out there. Absolutely correct, we've got the waterline project going on out there. The the school is also doing some work to the street out there, and then we've got uh a paving project that will be coming through after everyone's done working out there, so it's gonna be um it'll be busy with construction the next foreseeable year, for sure.
And and Andy, y'all are recommending approval, correct?
We are recommending approval, yes, sir.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to motion for an approval, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. Item eleven is the consideration possible action to authorize the city manager to submit a letter of commitment to the TCEQ on-point source program fiscal year twenty twenty Clean Water Act, Section three nineteen H grant program for the design and construction of the City Hall parking lot and traffic medians using low-impact development methods and development of feasibility study for the dredging of the Yano Grande Lake located along the Arroyo Colorado floodway. All those?
Um yes, sir, Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon, uh the uh TCEQ non-point source program, also known as a three nineteen grant program, are currently accepting applications to fund uh water quality, stormwater management-type projects. Our our applications are being submitted in collaboration with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Stormwater Task Force under the direction of RATES, which is the Research Applied Technology in Education Services. We have three projects that have been identified, and again, these are uh meant to improve uh the uh water quality that is running off of the property. Uh the first project is the uh City Hall Parking Lot, the one there just to the east of City Hall. The uh the project consists of uh pavement overlay, but at the same time increasing the the uh increase in permeable areas by adding landscape in other areas that uh that will allow for water to either be absorbed or treated uh prior to being released to the storm sewer system. Uh at the same time, we're also looking at the uh the medians, which I know we brought to you in the past, uh the medians, the grass areas at the intersection of Business Seventy-Seven and Commerce, and the other ones at Business Seventy-Seven and Washington. Also, we're look, we're looking at these with similar applications, looking at increasing the permeable areas, landscape, and subsurface detention. What I mean by sub-subsurface detention is that we uh we hold stormwater runoff underground prior to being released, and again, that that holding period allows wa- allows sediment to settle prior, again, to to the water being released to the storm sewer system uh downstream. The third project is more of a feasibility study, and it's a regional, uh it's a regional study. It uh involves the Yano Grande Lake, and if I may, I'm gonna bring up the um I am gonna bring up the uh the location map for that one. By sharing the screen real quick. The Yano Grande, I'm assuming you can see the screen now, is that correct?
Yes.
Again, having to do with the Arroyo Colorado, the where the Arroyo Colorado in essence starts is just east of ten fifteen over in West Loco and Mercedes area. What we call the diversion dyke, at this point, right here on the screen, the Arroyo Colorado starts uh going west, and then the uh the north floodway starts going north. The Yano Grande Lake area is this three hundred, or I'm sorry, hundred and five acre tract that once upon a time, uh I believe was a was a lake. And so what we're looking at is dredging this area, we're excavating it so that it it'll serve as a detention pond, and at the same time uh provide some detention prior to water, stormwater entering the uh the Arroyo Colorado. Uh this is a feasibility study, and so it's it's uh meant to uh look at the feasibility, the environmental impacts and so forth, prior to looking for funding for on the construction. And again, it's a uh it's a collaborative uh project that involves not just the city of Harlingen, but it'd be more cities like uh other cities in the Stormwater Task Force, like West Loco, Mercedes, La Fedia, uh Cameron County, and Idabel County, so uh that is the gist of that project right there. So the uh the ask today is that we authorize city manager to commit to uh to the uh the submitting the applications. Projects wanted to have a a maximum forty percent match requirement, uh which uh based on our cost estimate, it'd probably be around two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand. But those two hundred and fifty thousand can also be done with in-kind services, meaning staff could do the engineering and some of the analysis uh needed for that project. The third project, which is a feasibility study, they might need it for that, or the commitment would be ten thousand if awarded by by TCEQ. At this point, as staff is recommending uh approval uh to authorize the city manager to, in essence, commit or submit the letters of support.
All right, is there a motion to authorize the uh city manager to submit the commitment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Pointe, a second, Commissioner Odiva, are there any questions or discussion? Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, we'll go to item twelve, which is consideration possible action on adopting an ordinance approving the negotiated resolution between the City of Harlingen and Texas Gas Service regarding the company's April thirtieth, twenty twenty Cost of Service Adjustment filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting new tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable. Gabe?
Mayor, I'm under the commission, on April thirtieth, uh Texas Gas Service filed uh COSA uh Cost of Service Adjustment, uh requesting a tariff increase of one million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our attorneys, Thomas Mercado and Karen Alipa, representing the cities from the Rogue Valley, were able to negotiate a reduction of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for a total tariff increase of one million eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Robert Drucker from the law firm reviewed the ordinance and approved its content. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, adoption of the ordinance, approving the negotiated resolutions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? Then as, I don't, could I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Harlingen, Texas, city approving a negotiated resolution between the state and Texas Gas Service, TGS, or the company, regarding the company's April thirtieth, twenty twenty Cost of Service Adjustment, COSA filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting new tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, providing for the recovery of the cities and uh TGS's reasonable and necessary rate cases, adopting a savings clause, determining that ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirement of the Texas Open requirements, excuse me, of the Texas Open Meetings Act, declaring an effective date, repealing any prior ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company's and the city's legal counsel.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved, second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen is board appointments, does anyone have any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
Okay. I have an appointment to the Audit Committee to take uh this the slot that is the designated for a representative of the business community that was previously held by Michael Lamon, and that's uh that'll be Fabian Borrego. Uh he's the Regional Chief Financial Officer. He's the Regional Chief Financial Officer for Universal Health Services, South Texas Health System, and he's a resident of Harlingen. So is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, item 14 is the executive closed session attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712 Texas Government Code to receive legal advice pertaining to the city's rights to these privileges and obligations over the convention center lease, an obligation operation agreement, and the working capital fund contemplated therein and related legal issues. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to now go into executive session to consult with our attorney. We're going to do that by going to a separate, we're going to leave this Zoom meeting and go to a separate Zoom meeting. There is an action item associated with this item, so we will return to this Zoom meeting, although we complete the executive session Zoom meeting. So we'll see you, see you all in the executive session Zoom meeting. The commission is out of executive session at 6:57. We'll wait for the rest of the commission's staff to join us before going to item 15.
We're just lacking Commissioner Plante. There he is.
Okay, so there they are, I believe. So we'll go to item 15, consideration of possible action regarding the direction to be taken pursuant to convention center lease and operation agreement, working capital of the city manager.
Mayor, Commissioner, staff has recommended that we move forward and issue payment to VCLR Convention Services in the amount of $165,863 out of the working capital fund in accordance with the agreement for operations of the convention.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting for this evening. So we are adjourned. Please, everyone, stay safe. Mask, distance, wash, and make sure everybody else around you is doing so. And so, good night and have a good evening.